Okay, so maybe. But cuz his video is on. No, he's out of the waiting room.
Hi.
Everybody.
Hi, Amy.
Hey.
Hey, guys.
Hi, Jerry.
Hello.
Looks like we're being recorded.
Oh.
We are being recorded.
Hi, guys.
What you say can and will be used against you.
Amy.
What? Oh, gosh.
Yeah, the right to remain silent. Anything you say can and will be used against you.
Uh, well, I think is, I think since this is over Zoom, you have the right to remain muted.
I do have a daughter named.
And I'm gonna prevent everybody from getting a computer virus. I'm spraying.
It's good, good computer hygiene there, Steve.
Yeah.
I know I've already had it. I don't know where to give it. That's the best twenty-five bucks you can spend.
To get the.
Yeah, you just go to Hy-Vee, call them up, make an appointment, they prick your finger, and then fifteen minutes, they send you an email and says if you have antibodies or not.
Yeah.
It's twenty-five bucks.
I got tested.
Yeah. Do I need? No. Thank you. I'm good.
We got three people at our office with it, and then Kevin, you know, who I'm around all the time. You got that test you saw him on and tested positive. I said, hey, if you've had, I've certainly had. So I went and got tested negative.
And you did it.
Yeah.
It's crazy how.
Oh, I know. I had, I can even tell you when I had it, you know, and Dawn got it. She got tested. Yeah.
I can't tell where I'm at. Oh, there I am. I'm Kim Downs.
Yes.
Do you want me to sign this now or after?
Yeah, it was mostly the ceiling there, Kim.
Mostly just the ceiling. You don't see Andy?
There we go.
Going to keep it confidential in here.
There you go.
That's more gooder.
I didn't really think anybody wanted to see our mugs anywhere.
Told Patty was being recorded and immediately he left.
Right. Copy of this, Andy?
Sure.
Yeah.
Is that all it takes for him to go?
There you go. That's good to know in the future.
Yeah. I'm gonna keep that in the back of my mind.
There you go. Maybe get one of those virtual backgrounds like John has.
I know, John. I liked your Hawkeye one better.
You're muted, John.
You're muted, John. There you go.
I can change it real fast.
There you go.
Yeah.
Perfect. Yeah, cuz it echoes. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, all.
Hey, Dick.
Hi, Dick.
Hey, Dick.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Rob.
Hey, everybody.
All right, I guess it's five thirty, so we can go ahead and get started. Hiawatha Regular Council Meeting, February third, twenty twenty-one. Roll call, please.
Steve Dotson.
Here.
Amy Wickendall.
Here.
Rob Archibald.
Here.
Jerry Moinco.
Here.
Dick Olson.
Here.
All righty, approval of the agenda.
Some.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Approval of the consent agenda.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hey, citizens input. We get any letters? Carrie, anything we need to?
No, we didn't get anything in the clerk's office. There is somebody online.
Okay.
That may be a citizen.
Okay. If we have any citizens input, we would welcome it, welcome it now. State your name, address. If not, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Reports. Anybody got any reports they'd like to share with us?
Um, just briefly, I attended the, uh, it was kind of, we brought back the working group for the Turtle Creek Park Committee to kind of flesh out Phase Two. Um, so basically, that's just kind of progressing along well, um, which is kind of establishing priorities for what we can do within Phase Two and what's realistic in terms of spending and making the park a destination. So wrapped up pretty well. I know we're just kind of focusing on, it looks like trails uh, in a little bit of the playground elements, uh, as well as tree planting, uh, is what seems to be the direction that, uh, Phase Two is going in. We'll have more of a definitive, uh, conclusion kind of at the end of this month, I think.
Okay. Great. Kim, you got anything?
Yeah, I just have a couple updates wanted to share with you that the library project is, uh, we finally have the certificate of substantially complete. Uh, it doesn't, we still, however, have some HVAC system things that we're needing to work through along with a twenty-one page punch list. Um, that is established between city staff, the architect, and civil engineer. So we'll uh, continue to work with them. It does not, uh, with the substantially completed, it does not unobligate them from, from taking care of those. So we'll continue to work through that. The second thing I wanted, uh, to share is that we are within SEVA with our uh, server transfer of all of our DAB information, that direction. We're getting closer to getting that over there. I've been working with Ina Connect. Uh, they have already started, uh, with some storing some of our information over there. It's really coming down to like our financial program, uh, which is like our G works that we do a lot of different things in, in that system that we'll have to have transferred over along with water department's uh, information. So we are scheduled for the third weekend of February to get that all transferred over. So we're getting closer.
Good. Well, I'm sure Doug and Chris will make us very happy with that new process.
Yes, we're excited about it.
We hope so.
Everybody else. I'd just like to comment, Kim, uh, Janelle gave me a tour, uh, a week or so ago. And if you haven't been in there, as soon as you walk in, and those who have been there will appreciate the comment, it's, uh, unbelievable. It, you stand in the middle as you come in and look both ways, and it's like looking down a football field. It's just really impressive.
Yeah. You, you can't even tell the old from the new, can you, Dick?
You absolutely cannot.
No.
No. In fact, I thought it was all new.
Yes, exactly. I, it's actually the, there's only one way you can really tell that it's the old building, that Phase Two is the original building, and that is if you notice the window, the window pane color, uh, in the big, bigger open area where there's three sets of windows, and you can, you can tell that there's one old window. But, uh, I, of course, that's something I noticed and, and we'll get that so that the stain is the same color. But we will do that ourselves. We, we won't have, we won't have Garland take care of that.
Well, the, the users are gonna love it with all the different seating areas and that special area they've got back for the teens.
Yeah.
It's
Yeah.
Just really, really did a great job.
It is. And the lighting that comes through with lowering the shelving, so the shelving isn't as tall. Uh, it takes that light from the, from the, from the south to the north. I mean, it just makes it so bright and so beautiful. You just, you just can't help but want to sit in there, so.
One, one last comment. Bill, the chairs you donated, uh, I thought you had them designed for the library.
Yeah.
I got a few. You know, I, I told Janelle that I'd look, and I got a few more, Kim. We got probably four more if they want them.
Oh, okay.
They match.
Okay, yeah.
So they're, they're more than welcome to have them. Like, that's my gift.
I'll have Jerry come grab them.
Okay. All right, anybody else? If not, uh, hopefully they get that furnace going cuz it's gonna be well-tested this weekend.
Oh, yes, it will.
That's for sure.
Okay, we'll move right on to business then. Public hearing on a proposal to enter into a purchase, sale, and development agreement with Hiawatha Village Center Developers LLC, which include the potential sale of city interests in real estate property. Okay, we're open that public hearing at five thirty-seven. And Carrie, did we receive anything in the mail?
Uh, no, we did not.
And is there anybody that wants to go ahead and speak in behalf?
Is this, is this presentation time?
Yep.
Yep, this is your time to shine.
Carrie, you throw it up on the, on the screen? Perfect. Okay, so this is, uh, this will be from the northwest corner looking southeast, uh, and what we are proposing here, it's a four-story building, forty units, uh, about five thousand square feet of residential. Um, we're kind of replicating the size off a couple of projects we have in Iowa City and, and have had good success with. We think there'll be a, a good fit here, um, and everything.
You mean to say five thousand squid of, s- square feet of commercial, you mean?
Yep. What did I say?
You said residential.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Forty units and five thousand square feet of commercial, correct? Um, so Carrie, if you could go to the next slide, we'll just kind of walk through the, the project. So that's the location. I'm sure you're all very familiar, but the, the parcel we'd be buying from the city is, uh, directly across the street from GoDaddy and by, I think that's the American Legion.
Yes, yeah. It's the old Aherne.
Yeah.
Location.
Next slide there, Carrie. Okay, so this is the site plan. Um, I won't bore you to death, but, uh, pretty much, you know, enough parking to satisfy everything, a few extra. Um, our strategy in this is, I think we'll keep all the stuff to the left half of the screen for the commercial, and then the right half would be uh, for the residential. We've kind of, uh, differentiated, I guess you could say, the, the entrances, so, um, it's a little hard to see here, but the, the right entrance is for the apartments that we could have up to two commercial spaces. We're thinking maybe three, that'd be a little tight, but, um, and so then we left a little patio, uh, area. If we were to get a restaurant user, they could have some outdoor seating, uh, kind of along Robbins Road, kind of entice people um, to come check it out. So, next slide there, Carrie. Okay, so then I'm gonna start at the bottom and kind of go up, but the, kind of the first part, we knew, you know, with a commercial user, you need a little, uh, higher ceiling, right? They don't wanna go in with an eight or a nine-foot ceiling. Um, so we sunk that commercial space down, which in turn caused our, uh, underground parking to sink a little bit. So you can kind of see we slope, slope the entrance back up to the right side of that bottom image. Um, and then again, so we have, uh, commercial on the Robbins roadside, and then towards the parking lot, which would be the east, we kept the residential, and then three more floors of residential above that. Um, so your, your finished ceiling heights will probably be ten to twelve feet for the commercial, and then all of your residential will have a nine-foot finished ceiling. So still, still a nicer feel. Um, and you can see we, it's, let me look at this. It was about, uh, half and half, kind of a little off, but one to two, you know? Even before COVID, what we've seen is a lot of, uh, a lot of people don't like having roommates anymore after college, right? So um, we've increased the number of our, our one-bedroom ratios, uh, but people kind of like to have their own space, their own laundry, so all these will have laundry inside the unit. Um, and they'll, they'll be nice finishes. I, I don't think I have pictures in here, but all granite countertops, LVP kitchen flooring. Uh, so they'll be, they'll be nice units and I think an attractive, uh, space for people to live. Next slide there, Carrie. Again, kind of, kind of the same image. I, I'll hit a few more points here, but, um, so we kept storefront, uh, on the commercial space, kind of, uh, keep that open feel. Um, every unit has a deck. Uh, you can kind of see the, the thing we had to do above the commercial space have the diagonal tiebacks, um, on the decks, on the rest of space will have posts all the way down. Um, but again, it's, it's just a sharp-looking building, in our opinion at least. So most of it is masonry, uh, the dark gray at the bottom is all masonry. And then when you go to the top, it's a lighter masonry, and then the each bump out where it's a, a white color would be a corrugated metal panel. Um, and then you'll have a black aluminum railing, and then the, the tan sections below the windows or in between the storefront windows on level one would be like a hardy panel. Next slide, Carrie. And then what we did here, you can see it's a, a little more bare, and that's because if you think about the commercial space, our, our our slam dunk, I guess, would be to get one big restaurant user, right? It's five thousand square feet. That might be wishful thinking. So we'll make provisions for two. I think we'll have two grease interceptors, two grease ducts. Um, but the, the theory here is that with the parking lot on the other side, that's where their entrance will be, their main seating, and then the kitchen is back of house, right? So this bare wall in the back is, is where their kitchen will be. So you need some blank wall space to house that area, right? And then some meters on the backside and that type of thing. And, uh, I think that brings us to the end. So I guess, do you guys, any questions for me or?
Um, I think, I mean, it's a beautiful-looking project. I, I guess I'm curious about what the, you know, the, you know, for the residential side of it, what do you look at for like monthly rent for, you know, like a single apartment, you know, a single bedroom versus double bedroom?
Right. Um, I'd have to look back, but, but typically, I guess in Iowa City, and it'll be a little different here, but we have fifteen hundred for a two-bedroom, and I think it's eleven hundred for a one.
Okay.
And, yeah, I, I'd have to, I know we did some comparisons of some, uh, newer units in the Cedar Rapids, Hiawatha, Marion area, and, and the square footage price aligned with the newer units here. So I think, I think we'll be okay leasing these at a, at a, a fair price and lease them up quickly.
Yeah, I don't think you'll have, uh, any trouble leasing this. It's a beautiful project, and it's been a while since we've had anything like this in the Hiawatha kind of area. So I appreciate you guys picking us to come do this project. Looks really nice.
Absolutely.
It really does.
And I think, you know, we definitely are in, in very much need of more housing units. I think, Rob, I think you're right. I think they'll probably fill up pretty quickly.
Yeah, and the underground, underground, uh, garages are gonna be, are, those are gonna be pretty awesome.
Those are popular.
Not have here, so.
Yeah, those will be needed.
Yeah.
I think that's a first of a kind that I can recall.
Just, just so everyone knows, you need to thank your mayor.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, we worked, we worked a lot, a lot of time on this. That was, uh, behind the scenes, and, uh, I'm glad it's finally coming to, coming to paper and maybe, maybe be built this, uh, spring, cuz, uh, we definitely need it. And I, I, I just think it's a sure thing, and there's some other, other areas in Hiawatha that, uh, need the same type of thing to happen, so.
Yeah.
Nice, nice job, Bill. I think you really have a good vision on this and kind of goes with what is yet to come at the Oakbrook area, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Billy is, Billy has worked very hard with us on this and, and, and stuff like that. Like I said, when I came here eight years ago, I really wasn't planning on coming here. Now look, um, Kim just always says bring more money. And, uh,
For sure.
You know, like I said, Andy, they've, they've done a phenomenal job. I've been to Iowa City and, and previewed the existing, uh, units and stuff, and they are, they're gorgeous, they're beautiful. Um, i- it's definitely gonna be a, and I, I guess if you take into account what should be going forward on Robbins Road and that area and stuff, I, I think this is kind of the cornerstone that kind of gets this thing moving in the right direction. Um, i- it is gonna be a beautiful facility. It starts to make some things happen around there, um, and hopefully we can, uh, you know, do this and, and some other projects and continue to grow Hiawatha. It's like I always tell Kim, we're here, so we gotta help, so we're, we'll do what we can.
I was just looking, I remembered, uh, when I saw the underground parking area, was that eighty, uh, parking space, spaces? So each unit would have two?
There were, there were only thirty-six in the underground. There might be eighty exterior, but I think about a hundred and seven total. The hu- a hundred is the requirement, but.
So we'll first come, first served for underground parking now, or?
Typically, it's one per unit, one per unit guaranteed, then the second bedroom, you know, has to park outside. Are they?
Sure.
Okay. Let the roommates duke that out.
The outside is free.
You're not, you're not gonna be charging for parking then? What was that question?
You won't be charging for parking space?
No, it, it, you know, like in North Liberty, we don't. Downtown Iowa City, we do. Corville, we do. It just depends on the area, but this location, we will not.
Well, that will be a tremendous selling point.
Right.
Yeah. Um, and that's again, why we think it, we believe it'll fill up right away, that not only do you get a brand-new apartment that's gonna be deluxe, but you're gonna have at least a parking spot, um, underground and no snow to fight and all this other stuff. So uh, like you said, there's nothing like that here. Hopefully, again, we lead and, and get some of this stuff going, make some things happen and, and help Hiawatha grow.
So I have another question, uh, you can't, you're like. When this is approved and everything, how soon could you start and expected, uh, finish, completion date?
Yeah, so we're on, uh, February twenty-second, I believe, is the date for P and Z, which apart, put us at a March third council. Um, and by the time the design is done and kind of that, and the person running this, uh, the Staybridge Hotel in Corville, he's doing that. So he'll be done in June. So our thought is we'll probably start mid-May, mid-May to June one, somewhere in there, and it'll be about a thirteen-month build. And Iowa City, like August one is a cr- concrete date that you can't miss if you wanna get your units leased based on college rentals, but I imagine this working community, it's, it's not as a critical, but sometime in the summer or fall, we'd like to be ready to lease them.
As soon as they get in the ground, we're planning on getting in the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And help promote as well.
Oh, great.
We can.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll definitely be in touch on that.
Yeah.
Well, regrettably, I can't see it, but from what everybody's said, it sounds like you're setting a standard for that area. And, uh, we thank you very much for doing that.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity. Like Doug said, I mean, this has been a couple of years that we've been talking to Bill and Doug and a, a common friend named Greg Opel, but our, our thought is, okay, we do this one, and hopefully it works like we're all hoping and planning, and that we kind of continue down Robbins Road, you know, whatever way opens an opportunity first.
Is it possible to send out to the council and the mayor, uh, a copy of the, the drunk for the ex- exterior?
If you have any run, renderings, I'd love to see it.
Oh, yeah.
I can send that out tonight.
Perfect.
Okay, thanks, Carrie.
I, I just have one, I have one question. Cindy, you're on the call, aren't you?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah. Um, I noted the, uh, the TIF is sixty-seven-five, but I didn't see any value for the, uh, the property. Generally, we look at somewhere around ten percent. So are we looking at somewhere around seven hundred thousand or so?
For the construction costs?
Yeah.
You're totally.
Um, just, just here, that's, that seems.
Andy, you might be able to answer that for the.
Our, our total project is nine million, yeah, nine point two. I think the, the TIF was just calculated off the commercial space.
Yeah, and they'll utilize the urban pre-vite for the multifamily.
Okay, so that's a little different calculation.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's why there was no value. All right.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, total project is nine point two million.
Yeah.
Nice.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody?
No.
Well, I'm excited, so, uh,
I guess so.
Absolutely.
Let's get this thing going. We've been talking about it a long time, and I know that the, the direction kind of changed a little bit with COVID and stuff. You know, we probably were looking at more commercial in that area, but now that residential, we're so wide on that, that I think this is a great fit, and I think that these guys are gonna be amazed at the outcome.
And yeah, hopefully, hopefully, this is the first of many conversations we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
And I'll, I'll be grateful to see Oakbrook finally developed after so long trying to make that project a reality, so, thank you.
Yep. All right, well, we'll close the public hearing at, uh, five fifty-one, and so, A, consider resolution, making final determinations on the potential sale and interest of real estate, approving the authorization ex- ex- exclusion of the purchase, okay? Sale and development agreement by, between the city of Hiawatha, Hiawatha Village Center Developer LLC.
I'm moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Amy Wickendall.
Hi.
Rob Archibald.
Hi.
Jerry Moinco.
Hi.
Dick Olson.
A very enthusiastic guy.
Steve Dotson.
Absolutely, I.
And I wanna go ahead and thank Doug and Andy both for coming in personally, cuz, uh, I really, I'm really excited about this and, and can't wait to see it happen.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, more business. Public hearing, CDBG.
You bet.
Uh, CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program Status and Funding Activities for Hiawatha, for the city of Hiawatha.
So.
Yep, go ahead.
I'm Mark Over. I'm with, uh, East Central Iowa Council of Governments, so we're the ones that are doing the administration for the grant. And so I just have a Status of Funding Activities Report I need to, uh, just read, uh, for anybody who's listening, uh, for public or anybody on council as well. Um, so with your permission, can I go ahead and start and do that?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, for general description of accomplishments to date, uh, CDBG housing contract in the amount of two hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars was awarded to the city of Hiawatha from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. With the release of funds issued on December third, two thousand eighteen, the city contributed an additional nine thousand local match to the program to cover grant administration and technical services for the program. Um, summary of expenditures to date are through January twenty, twenty twenty-one, a total of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one uh, dollars and fifty-five cents has been invoiced. Ninety-one thousand, fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cents of what that was for construction. And thirty thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars for grant administration and also technical services. Construction items included, but we're not limited to the replacement of siding, windows, doors, and flooring, general electrical, plumbing, and mechanical work, as well as lead reduction items. Uh, general description of the remaining work, uh, three properties have been completed, uh, with the re- rehabilitation. One property is still in construction, one is under review at IADA, and one more. One property is still in construction, one is under review at IEDA, and one more property remains to be rehabilitated. The completion date expected is August thirty-first of this year. And general description changes made to the project budget, performance targets, activities, schedules, project scope, location, objectives, and beneficiaries. There have been no changes or amendments at this time. And that's all I have.
All right, um, anybody have any questions for Mark? If not, I'll tell you, Mark, it's been a good project. I I actually, you know, ran into some people that have that have received and, uh, very impressed.
Good.
So.
I have one question, did the deratio impact any of that?
Yes, um, on a couple of different ways. Um, the main way it affected us is the contractors are way too busy now to bid on projects. Um, and there was some work that uh, we probably would have done, but was damaged in the storm, uh, for instance, a roof. And so insurance, uh, funds paid for roof replacement, whereas this program would have helped with the roof replacement had that not happened.
Yeah.
Um, so there's been some delays with the whole COVID pandemic thing and this and that, and then deratio on top of that. Um, but we are optimistic that we can press forward and and still finish on time. IEDA has has stressed that with all the issues that we've had, mainly with COVID and all that, that if a re- an extension was needed, there would not be a dispute as far as authorizing that. But we would like to get it done on time regardless, um, so that's what we're shooting for.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Not will close the hearing at five fifty-seven. Or, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, number eight, cigarette violations. A motion approving acknowledgement settlement agreement with Fairway Stores, Inc. Number fifty-five located at eight, eight-five Miller Road. I need a motion that we settled.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Question, Bill?
Yes.
Is their address need to be changed to Edgewood? Or that?
It's still Miller, yeah, event, yeah, it does.
Okay.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know exactly where we're at on that. Okay, B, First Defense Cigarette Violation Hearing for Big Ten Mart, number nineteen located at twelve twenty-five Boyson Road. And so we're gonna start that. So how do we do this?
Carrie, this is. So, yeah, so, um, I received their acknowledgement form and check in the mail this morning.
Okay.
Um, too late to put on the agenda. But I did receive that, so they have acknowledged, uh, sent me a signed acknowledgement, and some agreement was payment for their fine.
Okay.
So we just, we need to just amend this, and or do we have to put it on the next meeting?
Now that you have it, I think you can just make a motion, you can acknowledge.
To accept it, yeah.
I moved to accept the the acknowledgement that we received in the mail today from Big Ten Mart, number nineteen.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second, do we do roll call for this, Carrie? No, just all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And C, uh, offense violation for uh, Robbins Road BP located at nine seventy-five Robbins Road. And tell me the story on this one, too, didn't they, they've already? Yep.
Yeah. So. Go ahead. Yeah, I have not, uh, received anything from them today, but I reached out, um, to their company, is actually in Florida. They have received our paperwork. And, um, she told me on the phone today that they will be signing the form and sending the payment in, but I have not received anything today.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think you should open, I do think you should open the hearing on this one, even though there's no one to speak, but at least go through those motions and just acknowledge that there was no one present, and then that Carrie did speak with someone. And upon receiving, uh, payment, then you can, um, we would acknowledge and accept the settlement.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we will open the public hearing at six o'clock, and Carrie, you can do the quick version of what's going on. And we'll close it.
Uh, they, uh, field a cigarette check, um, have not received anything in the mail as of today. Uh, spoke with them on the phone, they will be sending a signed acknowledgement, settlement agreement with the check or the penalty.
Okay. Perfect, so we're closing the public hearing at six oh one. And we're gonna move on to number nine. Consider resolution fixing date for a public hearing of February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one at five thirty PM. Our proposal to enter into a develop agreement with Industrial Avenue LLC and provide for providing for publication of notice thereof.
So moved.
Okay.
Discussion? Roll call.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Jerry Moinco.
Really, is Jerry?
Here is muted.
I think he's muted.
I am so sorry. I am dog barking, sorry. Yeah, mute, aye.
I didn't hear, did he say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
All right, number ten, just consider resolution fixing date, February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one at five thirty PM for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed four million one hundred thirty-five thousand general obligation capital loans notes for the city of Hiawatha, state of Iowa, for essential co- cooperation proposals and provide for publication of notice thereof.
Don't move.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Jerry Moinco.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Okay, number eleven, consider resolution fixing date, February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one at five thirty PM for a meeting on authorizing of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed one hundred thousand general obligation capital loan notes of the city of Hiawatha, state of Iowa, for general uh,
corporate.
Corporate proposals and provide a publication of notice thereof.
I'll move.
Second.
Uh, discussion? Roll call, please.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Jerry Moinco.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Number twelve, consider resolution approving the engagement agreement with Aaron's and Colony, Looney, PC in connection with the in issuance, insurance of general obligation capital loan notes.
Some of.
Second.
Discussion? We're gonna love those interest rates, right, Dick?
Yes, certainly do. I wish I could get that kind of interest rate.
You and me both, roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Jerry Moinco.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Okay, number thirteen, consider resolution acknowledging the Water Board's resolution and authorizing, authorization, authorizing partial payment estimate number one for the Hiawatha Water Department Booster Station Improvements Project.
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Jerry Moinco.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Number fourteen, Hiawatha Public Safety and Training Facility Project, A, consider resolution approving partial payment estimate number seven.
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Jerry Moinco.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
And B, consider resolution approving partial payment estimate number eight.
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call.
Jerry Moinco.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Number fifteen, consider resolution approving the, a professional service agreement with An- Anderson Bogart in connection with the twenty-twenty-one Eleventh Avenue Storm Sewer Project. Hello?
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Jerry Moinco.
Aye.
Number sixteen, twenty-twenty Park site lighting project. A, consider resolution approving partial payment estimate number two.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
It looks, uh, the one that's completed at Clark Park looks phenomenal, so I'm excited to see the other ones.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Jerry Moinco.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Okay, number seventeen, consider resolution approving final pay, payment estimate number one to Tik.
Chick, chick fry.
Chick fry, chick fry excavating in connection with the deracial storm cleanup efforts. Chick fry.
I would have never guessed that.
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Jerry Moinco.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Number eighteen, consider resolution approving partial payment number one and final payment estimate number two to Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete LLC in connection with deracial storm cleanup efforts.
So moved, second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Jerry Moinco.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number nineteen, consider resolution authorizing city staff to enter into agreement with the National Resource Conservation Service in connection with the deracial waterway cleanup within the flood zone, flood plain, plain in Hiawatha.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Jerry Moinco.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Okay, number twenty, COVID nineteen updates. So that's where you come in, Kim?
Yeah. All right, well, just to open up discussion as as how we wanna counsel, how we wanna move forward with our next meeting, we have been meeting virtually for now, I know in looking at our, looking at what the trend is doing right now, we are seeing, uh, a significant lower, uh, positive test. Um, as of the sixth, we've had a hundred and fifty-four in Lynn County that have tested positive, that is quite a bit different than a week ago, a week ago, it was four hundred and fifty-four, uh, for the week, so there is a significant difference there. Hospitals, uh, for the seven-day admission has an average of two, um, within the last two, uh, with a stay of twenty-four. And then, of course, the seven-day positive test is two point five percent. Uh, with the the cumulative test being a posi- positivity rate that is twenty percent or less. I think today it was, um, nineteen, nineteen, or seventeen, something, the other day it was nineteen. Um, so the seven-day average, just like I said, ten point five percent. Hiawatha, if you just look at our Hiawatha zip code itself, um, as of today, we were point five seven percent, and two weeks ago, we were one point four three percent, so I, hopefully, these trends continue to go that direction along with, certainly, along with people being able to get vaccinations, hopefully, that number continues to head the direction um, that it is today, keep, keep going down. Um, I know Lynn Ca- Lynn County Public Health is pretty busy, they're still averaging about four hundred calls a day. Uh, so just a variety from, um, they do have separate lines for the vaccine line versus the general, uh, COVID question line. Um, but, you know, just kinda wondering what you guys are thinking, what you're comfortable with, I know the city of Marion is still doing a hybrid, where they have some, some of their council members are coming in and some are still doing it virtually, it's kind of been, uh, whatever their preference is, and in providing that social distancing. Cedar Rapids is still doing virtual and plan to do virtual all through summer yet, um, unless those numbers, uh, greatly um, are reduced, so. What are your guys' thoughts in moving forward?
I personally think we're on the verge of our, or the edge of our third surge. And, uh, if you look back at the end of October to where we're at right now, the numbers are pretty much exactly the same, and I would like to, personally would like to wait a little bit longer, wait another meeting or so, and just see how it goes.
I I'll concur with Rob, um, just, I I I know, like, the numbers have trended down, and that's good. I think, but I do think some of it is just that natural uh, moving away from the holidays, but certainly the numbers still aren't the best in terms of it, and they are higher than where they were over the summer. Um, and at least from what I was reading here, um, again, on on the news today, they're expecting another possible bump in COVID cases due to the Super Bowl this weekend with various Super Bowl parties and gatherings, cuz that's just what they expect, so.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I would say, you know, let's, let's keep it virtual through February, re- reevaluate in March, hopefully, more people are vaccinated by then, and hopefully, the numbers continue to trend down, and we'll kinda make the decision again there.
Yeah, I I agree with, uh, the comments, and I think the bottom line for me is there's no rush, in in my opinion, to get back together in person. And quite honestly, I'm really impressed with, uh, the way these Zoom meetings are going in terms of hearing and, uh, it it just doesn't seem to be any disconnect, other than the fact that we're not in a room together.
Right.
And I do think the other thing was, if we all get to the point where all of us have received the vaccine, then I think at that point, then we can probably safely resume meetings. I know it's probably gonna be staggered for a little bit, just based on who's where and what demographic and what part of the the phase, but I think at that point would be another potential. You know, if the numbers still kinda stay in that not-so-good range, it's another potential avenue, if you, if you wanted to look at the horizon, so.
Yeah, I still can't get an appointment schedule. And I try every day.
Yeah, I mean, I'm personally not counting on probably getting it until. Yeah. I mean, I'm personally not counting on probably getting it until probably May or June, just based on everything. That would be my best, best guess as to when that'll happen. So. Yeah, I know it's, it's frustrating, but hopefully, hopefully they'll solve some of these logistical problems with the vaccine. Interestingly and weirdly enough, West Virginia apparently is really killing it in the vaccination game. So I'm just kind of, that kind of floors me a little bit, but.
It's because they're the only state in the, out of the 50 that didn't contract with CVS and Walgreens. They went with their local community pharmacy networks that were already in place and they were much better at getting the vaccine out expeditiously.
But their governor says that they don't have enough. He said they could have the whole state vaccinated if they'd get them the vaccine.
It just shows that we know how to do things at the local level.
Hmm. Amen to that.
Yeah.
Waiting, so.
Just to kind of bring it.
Okay.
To bring it full circle, I think we just do this on a month to month basis.
Yep.
Okay.
I agree. I just, personally, I miss the, you know, meeting in person and we learn things that we didn't know. And sometimes that gets, you know, overlooked in the Zoom meeting, but as soon as it's safe for everybody is what I'm, what I'm hoping for.
Yep.
Okay. Well, we will circle back around in our second meeting in March. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. And just, just a quick FYI, you'll see, you'll see a resolution at our next council meeting. I did have, I think two council meetings ago, I spoke about what the potential was to incentivize a way of, not necessarily incentivizing, but I'm calling it an incentive. If, if those who do get a vaccine, you know, we have varying people that have had their shot, their vaccines and some have done just fine. And some of them, you know, a day or two later aren't feeling so great and just giving them that time without taking that time off of their accrued PTO. And I did speak with Mark Permaner about that. He had him review. I know we had some, I know we had some information that was going around. And so I just wanted to share with you that I did speak with our city attorney, Mark Permaner, and he, his, he certainly is, his words is he agrees that the city should incentivize city employees to receive the vaccine rather than mandate it, giving the city employees a day or two to recover from the vaccine without impact to their PTO. Sorry. I'm not moving enough.
You're making a wiggle.
Got to wiggle a little more. So you know, Dick, I'm just shining in the dark. Oh, that's what's happening. My lights are shutting off. And so without their impact to their PTO seems reasonable and he is not aware of any legal issues associated with city council implementing such an incentive. So if you guys are still, that still sounded like the last time we talked, that sounded like that was a good option. So I will plan on putting resolutions together for.
What is happening with Dubuque? They, they were $100 to incentivize getting the vaccine or then the backlash on that.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a lot of information out there with the EOC that really isn't if it's not. What I want to say, if it's not a part of their job duties, you know, there's different ways to look at it from EOC and having that documentation that goes along with it to support that decision. And, you know, typically it only takes one person to, to feel like it's going against any, any of that, of that entitlement or, or lack of entitlement. So I think there's a lot of, certainly some controversy out there on doing something such as that.
I, I do think, I mean, definitely we always want to try to stay on the voluntary approach, but I also do think that the more of us in City Hall and, and as elected leaders who do get the vaccine does make it easier for other people to go ahead and overcome some of these, you know, trepidation and fears or whatever they may have, or even potentially combat some of the misinformation. So I do think the more of us that can get it ultimately will probably pull over more people to get it as well. So. Yeah, I, I think the proposal is great. We'll, we'll work on it from there and just keep advocating as long as, basically until we go blue in the, in the face, we'll keep advocating for it.
We'll keep, yeah, we'll keep educating and advocating. I did also notice before we go on to the next item. I just wanted to share that the city of Cedar Rapids, their public library had just posted out there on Monday. It's called Grab and Go Services Rezoom. And I'm not really sure what, at this point, what our Hiawatha library is thinking about doing. But as you know, we're still doing curb drop off and pickup. They're making appointments, setting times to be able to pick up. But Cedar Rapids is going to take it to that next level where they're going to limit capacity to their patrons. But they are going to allow 30 minutes or less or up to an hour for public computer use. Children must be accompanied by adults along with holding, making appointments for curbside pickup. And at this point, I have not had a chance to talk to Jamil as to what she is, what she is thinking and in regards to the, this proposal that Cedar Rapids has out there.
Well, I like the idea of opening up the computer stations for those kids that really need that.
Yeah.
Kids and adults. There's a lot of, a lot of need for that out there and I could support that as well. I don't think I ever want to give up my curbside pickup for library books, though. It's pretty awesome.
Pretty handy.
Jamil said it's working really, really well.
It is working very well.
We've probably used the library twofold as much since they started the pickup at the curb than.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, it does work pretty slick.
It does.
I suppose the only, the only thing that you'd have to do is just cleaning of the computers after every use would probably be the only.
Yeah, and we'd have to make sure we have spacing. So some of the things that we're looking at is we are having to look for stations that actually would have divider, the dividers in them.
Oh, yeah.
So we're, Jamil and I are both kind of looking to see what we can utilize there. Cause I'm sure that's something that we'll continue to use. That's not something that is just for this particular moment in time.
Constant change, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Well, that's the COVID update that I have.
Okay, continued 2020 budget discussion.
Okay. I know after Monday, we had some, or work session that we had for budget. We had, we had some numbers flying around and so I, Cindy worked on putting those numbers together that we were talking about over our meeting. And just in separating out fiscal year 22 from fiscal year, or fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 22. And I don't know if everybody had a chance to, to look at that, but as I mentioned, fiscal year 21 with Drachio and COVID certainly has, has effects on, on our, our general fund reserve along with our property tax relief fund balance, which I think the numbers that she presented here in the spreadsheet shows a $344,471 deficit. Now, as I said, we have some unknowns that we're still working, that we still have to work through, and that is the right away stump removal. We have an estimate from our engineer that we work with, MFA. But if you recall, when we went out for bid, we didn't receive, we didn't receive any bids. So we're now discussing, do we do, do we do that ourselves, run a piece of equipment or do we buy a piece of equipment? So we're kind of weighing out that cost, what that cost looks like. So we have that anywhere from 60 to 97,000. It just kind of depends. It may be something that we do ourselves if there, if the stump is 24 inches or less. If it's bigger than that, maybe we need to hire somebody to do that. So again, Rod is doing the research to determine what is going to be most cost effective for us. Do we have that? And then we also will have to do one, a spring curbside organic debris pickup because we don't know if we, that's the big unknown, because we don't know how many people really didn't get their, get their trees down that they needed to. Some, some of those individuals like me are, we're kind of waiting to see, are they going to make it through winter? Is it something that we could, you know, baby that tree, maybe those trees along, because it's hard to give them up? So we've got, we've got that, but we have really no idea what that's going to look like. We do have that as a project with FEMA. We had to have that in there by, no later than the December 22nd, even though we don't have a number. They allowed us to put that in there because typically FEMA gives you six months to get everything taken care of. But obviously, winter does not provide us that opportunity. So we have requested an extension for that. And then, um, as I mentioned too, we've got with FEMA for the Drachio, it's a 75% reimbursement as long as they approve, as long as they approve what we submitted. So they will review it with fine tooth comb. They will look at all of our documentation. If we miss any, you know, if we miss something, they could dock us for that. So lots of work is involved in that. And then in fiscal year 22, that really reflects mostly staff changes with the potential of shifting fire department, fire, fire department volunteers and ambulance volunteers to part-time paid staff along with two paramedics out of the three that council has authorized us to move forward with. So certainly it's that shift between employee benefits that we also did to be able to maintain the current levy rate at 1475 per 1,000.
Well, I think it's a good analysis that Cindy did and I fully support what you're talking about here. I, I think it's a good thing that, and a good use of our property tax relief fund to bridge that gap so that we can maintain the 1476 rate. And I think that's the way we should go, obviously. You, there's, there's no room. You can't lower the, the employee benefits levy.
Correct.
You can't lower the general fund levy. So the point I think Cindy's making is there's absolutely no wiggle room whatsoever.
Yeah.
I agree, Dick.
So do I.
Yeah.
So we'll wait to see what happens next year and I think it's, it's a very prudent course of action and we should continue it. I did note that Cedar Rapids did raise theirs 22 cents. They went from 1544 to 1566. So we're still well under that. I still, you know, I look at Marion at 1421 or 22.
Yeah.
And I know they have a lot more commercial than we do, so they, they can do that. But I guess it's one of those things, it wasn't that long ago. And Cindy and Kim, you're going to remember this, I'm sure. We had bragging rights in the metro area for the lowest tax levy. So really I was hoping that we might be able to inch our way back down to that Marion level or even below. But that's for another day, another year.
I think let's just hope like, you know, we can pick up from these twin disasters and keep growing the city. Cause I think that as long as we can keep growing it and get more of that, like you said, Dick, some of the commercial properties and commercial development along with an expanded residential base. I still think that makes it a possibility in the future, but you know, it, it, it is a little, it is a little bit of a bummer after so many years of trending downward that we, we have to kind of stay pat. But I know given the year that we've had and everything we've had to bring to the table and all the changes from this growth that we're experiencing, at least we don't have to go up.
And I, I think, you know, obviously I want to see lower taxes too, but look at the services that you get in the 5223 zip code that you don't get other places. Like the streets being plowed promptly and being done correctly, the, the ambulance service that we provide, the police officers just seconds or a few minutes away. I mean, those are things you don't get other places and to be able to compete tax wise, I think that's good. I mean, obviously I'd want to see it go down, but I'm happy with where it's at based on the services we provide.
I think the real, real important thing is we don't have to raise taxes. That, that to me is the critical issue.
Yeah, we got good momentum right now. I think that we need to hold the line. I know that we've had a terrible 21, but I just think we need to hold the line. And maybe, maybe some projects won't come to, come to, you know, as quick as we were hoping for. I mean, I just think that our momentum right now is really good and if we can continue, we'll be in a better position later rather than if we try to change the tax structure. Just my thought.
I agree, Bill. And we want to continue to build that property tax relief fund too. So we do have that reserved in case we run into another year like this. So that, that has some real value too.
You got it. Okay, anything else, Kim?
No, that's it. We will plan to move forward as we, as Cindy and I presented on Monday. We'll, we'll have, get those approvals going.
I, I'd just like to comment before, I'm sure Amy is eager to close this meeting. But I just opened up the file that Carrie sent of the, the new complex. And as my 30 something daughter-in-law would say, OMG. You know, that really is going to, and I'm, I know I'm stating the obvious, but that really starts to change the whole landscape of our village center. It's just incredible. And quite honestly, I think it's going to put some creative pressure on the Almond group with what they're planning on doing.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I agree.
So thanks, Bill, for helping make this happen and staying the course on working with those guys.
Well, we all did it because of the, the decisions we made to, to, to dedicate that property over there. You know, that's what I went to Iowa City and promoted the idea. And so we all did that. And I'd hope, I'd hope to find, I'm, I'm working on some others that there'll be new developers to this area. So I mean, I'd just like to continue that role.
Excellent.
Kudos.
Okay, anything else?
Side observation, now that the meeting's adjourning, Pat's back.
And we can, we can see a smile.
I never really did leave.
Yeah, it looks like he was out, out of space.
You don't have to account for yourself, Pat. It's okay.
It's lying prosper.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Get a motion. Got a second. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at 6:34. Thank you, everybody, and have a great evening.
You too. Watch the roads tomorrow.
Yeah, definitely.
Good night.
Night, night.
Good night, all.
All right.